All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting at a call.
The special session is being held on Thursday, January 8, 2015, in the Fifth No Congress Room in the Casino Grant Fund. Roll call. Murgia.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
All right, tonight, we have a conversation about the Hollywood Casino Grant Fund Recommendation Report. There's been a committee that has been working on this. I believe Mr. Connor has been asked to present the committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So, this is the proposed process and guidelines and other restrictions and allowances for the 2015 Hollywood Casino Grant Fund that we administer. So, again, as the mayor mentioned, there was a committee that was designated. That was Commissioners Murgia, McKernan, and Walters. And so, we've been working on this now for the last few months. And really, the only major change that's being proposed tonight is the methodology by which each grant's reviewed. So, as you remember, in the past, there was a selection committee that was appointed. And so, that's proposed a change for this year, and I'll get into that here in a little bit. At your place is there's a kind of a summary sheet of the different sections of the grant. So, we'll go, I'll hit each one of those as we go through. So, the first one on funding priorities, that's being recommended to stay the same. There's a statement there that talks about the importance of healthy communities, especially in the active living and healthy eating categories. That's being proposed to remain the same as far as the scope of the grants that are, that we're gonna be soliciting for this year. The size and term of the grant, the one change is that there's no maximum size that can be requested. So, last year, the, there was no floor, but there was a ceiling of $50,000 that the committee's recommending that there be no floor or no ceiling for any grant that can be requested. And again, this is the section where we're talking about the most major change. Again, this is a replacement of the outside selection committee using the Board of Commissioners and individual commissioners as a selection committee. So, as you can see, the individuals will serve as the selection committee. But ultimately, the Board of Commissioners needs to meet in a regular meeting to approve the, what's being recommended, just like it's happened in the past. So, it's gotta go through a regular meeting and get approval. Individual commissioners are being asked to be the review committee itself. I've listed a couple of different options on that that we didn't decide as a group what was the best way to go as far as getting the individual commissioners to assign. The first one is to use the Committee of Commissioners to kind of spearhead the list and get them assigned to the individual commissioners and ensure that the grants are reviewed, all grants are reviewed. The second would be is just we can provide you with a list. You could sign up and figure out which ones you wanted to review. But ultimately, we would like to make sure that all grants get some kind of a review. And so, if none are signed up, I guess I would look, I would go back to the Commissioner Committee and basically say, "Listen, these are unassigned. Can you please help with getting those assigned so we can get, you know, get the review done?" I'll stop right there for a second. Is there any comment or discussion on that part?
Okay, so, that's pretty broad, so to speak. So, when I say that, I mean individual commissioners will serve as a selection committee. Does that mean all commissioners, or does that mean a select few? What does that mean?
That's, that's the two options, right?
Yeah, I mean, the way that it was envisioned to me was is that you'd have this list of grants, and each commissioner would have an interest in one grant more than another. So, that commissioner would be assigned to review that grant and make a recommendation.
So, in other words, you know, how willing we are to step forward to do the work?
Well, but there's also at the end, you'll be responsible for distributing a certain amount of money as well. So, that'll tie into the review, so.
It's twofold.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just asking.
Yeah. On the eligible organizations.
Commissioner Townsend. Commissioner Townsend, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm trying to read and understand this. Like Commissioner Philbrook was asking, is it contemplated under either one of these two options that all of us as a commission body will review all of the grants that are submitted? Or would that be a separate option, not discussed in one or two?
That could be a third option. These are just things that I came up with in discussions with the commissioners of the committee. We didn't decide. These are just things that we've talked about. It could be done a variety of ways.
Commissioner Walker.
I thought the process that was discussed the last time that I remember being president was that each commissioner will be given a tenth, I guess, because there's ten of us.
Eleventh.
A mayor too, I guess, okay. Eleventh of the amount of money. And that we would then recommend, I mean, some of the issues were that the grant funding did not reach all districts in a fair and equitable manner. So, the idea was that each commissioner then would put forward, say, say it's $50,000, and you've got five grants you want to give out of $10,000 each. You throw them onto the, into the mix, assuming they meet the basic criteria. And then, at some meeting, if I'm looking right, in May, we'll either vote them all up or some of them up or, but it will take a action by all commission, by the whole commission, to approve all grants that are being given out.
Correct.
So, if by some improvidential selection by a commissioner, this group has some aspect to its operation that is contrary to the interest of the unified government, we could, as a commission, veto that particular grant. But otherwise, it would be up to each individual commissioner to put forward his share of the overall funding. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I think the other part of that is, is that I think each, with each commissioner having a set amount of money, they need to work with the organizations to get them, to get their applications in, you know, to work with them to get, you know, if you have an interest in a particular area, to get their grant applications submitted.
Well, I, I mean, each of the district commissioners clearly has a district to work in. And so, their groups are more well-defined to them, whereas I have the entire county, as does the mayor. And so, applications from theoretically anywhere in the county would be within my, my district, I guess, if you wanna call it that. So, I wanted to make sure that it was a situation where ultimately, if there is a bad choice, for whatever reason that might be made, that the commission as a whole can reject that particular allocation. I'm not saying it will happen. I'm just saying that it could.
Yeah.
And that ultimately, we will all either vote, we will all be voting on each other's recommendations.
You'll be voting on a slate, and at that point, you could, you could pick and choose. If you have problems with those, that's be the time to pull it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We have a couple. Commissioner Philbrook.
Two things. I want a grading sheet, so we're all on the same, on the same level. You know, what are we grading? How can we compare apples and oranges? I want it to be, you know, I wanna know how we're gonna point system this out instead of just looking at it superficially and go, "Oh, I like this group." All right? I want us all to be on the same level. So, when we're grading this, when I say, "Oh, they got 75, 75 points out of 100," that'll mean something, you know, and that you can actually see how they were graded. So, if I'm gonna have to support and say, let's say, somebody doesn't like a particular group, I'm backing. This is just, I don't expect that, but I'm just saying, if that were to be, I would like to have a way of showing why I am backing them, okay? Then, the other, the other thing is beyond, is beyond that is just because I'm in District A doesn't mean that I have to pull somebody that has their 501(c)(3) in District A. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think it's up to, the only, the only thing we're putting in the grant as far as the description is that they serve Wyandotte County residents.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure of that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kane and then Walters.
Well, first of all, I wanna thank the committee for what they did, because I think this is a more balanced way to spread the money out across the entire community versus just a few. Secondly, for Commissioner Walker and Mayor Holland, and it sounds like Commissioner Philbrook, you know, the Fairground needs money, so if you got extra, we'll take it. And then, I think it's important that, I don't know about a grading system, but I think each commissioner knows their district better than some of the other ones do. So, I would hope that the ones that we would recommend, the other commissioners would say, "Well, there's a lot of thought and a lot of effort in examples, just like the Fairground." You know, they don't have a lot of money, but I'd sure like to see them get some, because it's only gonna take so much to build that trap line so they can start making money.
Commissioner Townsend. Oh, no, Walters is next, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I wanted to comment on a couple of things and that'll come up. So, when we, when we talked about this and compared the current process to our proposed process, we wanted to try to keep it as similar as possible in that the goals are the same, application process is the same. And I don't know if you're gonna get to this later or if it fell out, but we were thinking that the Greater Kansas City Foundation would also vet these applications like they do now. So, we know when we get an application, when we actually are handed an application, it's been vetted. We know it's a legitimate 501(c)(3), and we know that, that the application is consistent with our rules and regulations. Now, in the old, the second, the second part of that previous process was that the committee sat down and graded all these things and then got together and made some recommendations. That goes away, and instead, the commissioners are gonna receive these applications, and they will decide based on their internal evaluation system which ones to evaluate. And at one time, we thought, "Well, okay, we've gotta, we've gotta figure out how to separate them so that all the District Seven applicants go to me, and the District Eight applicants go there, and this." And then, we soon realized, "Well, wait a minute." I mean, there may be some very interesting and reasonable applicants who are not in my district that I want to fund. So, the plan is that once vetted, each commissioner will receive all the applications, and they can decide which, from the master list, which ones they want to fund. Right?
So, I have a question about this. So, if you divide $500,000, which is the amount of money, less $50,000, right? Because we, do we not, would we not pay the community foundation something?
We do, but it's only about $5,000.
Oh, well, there you go.
It's not, yeah, it's never been nearly that high.
Okay, so, so it would leave, if, if you did that math, it would leave each, and you divided it by 11, it'd leave $45,000 per. The question then is, so there's someone that, people know that we have this system, that everyone has about $45,000 for their, to grant. If they asked for, for instance, if someone you talked to said, "Hey, I wanna put in an application. It's gonna be $60,000," you'd have to say, "I'd have to come up with 15 more, because I only have the authority." Is it, if, am I saying this right, that I'd only have the authority for 45?
So, you'd have to buddy up to one of us.
We'd have to be nice to a fellow commissioner.
Yes.
And talk about, yeah, I mean, it's something we'd all be, have to be willing to do. But I would, I would, I would say that we could also, because here's what I think might happen. And I just wanna vet this out. I don't know if the committee anticipated this. If people know that Commissioner Kane has about $45,000, three or four different groups are gonna pull him aside at different events and gonna say, "Hey, I've got this project. I wanna apply for it. What do you think?" And he would have to say, "You need to turn in an application, and it's due on this date, and you turn it in this time." Now, he might know, I'm making this up, so this is not on the record. I'm just using it as an example. He might know that there's a group that has a really great $20,000 project that he feels pretty good about, that if they put in application, it checked out, he'd wanna fund. He might tell the other groups, "You might put in an application for $25,000 or less," because he anticipates there might be another group that he wants to fund. Do you anticipate that might be how it works out? Or do you anticipate people will come forward and make, because even though we put size of grant, there's no restriction? There sort of is. I mean, there's an informal restriction in terms of the $45,000 available for each person to recommend. So, do you see how I'm saying? I'm just asking the question.
I don't think we saw it that way. I think we saw it that multiple commissioners might fund the same charity.
That we would team up. Two or more might say, "We both like this one." I didn't expect every commissioner to have five different little 501(c)(3)'s that they gave money to. And that would be 55 groups would get $5,000 bucks apiece, more or less.
But a commissioner could. If they had nine groups, if they wanted to give $5,000 to each.
That's true, that's true.
They sure could, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I'll go ahead and crank through, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. Well, I was just, to follow up on what Jim just said, I don't know that I ever contemplated that we would ever verbalize to somebody, "Well, there's other people in the hopper," that our recommendation would be that you turn in the application that's necessary to accomplish the project that you want to accomplish and not to limit it ahead of time in any way. Now, it may not be fully funded, but it should not be self-limited right out of the gate. Or at least, that was my interpretation of our.
Yes.
Well, if they're asking you for $100,000, and they know you've only got 45, then they're pretty well assured that they're not gonna get $100,000.
Well, but the applications don't go to the individual commissioners. They come to the unified government. We take it from there. And if there's, if there's a group that wants $100,000, we have 11 people who have an opportunity to partially fund that. That's the way I look at it.
Well, so, a lot of these groups get multiple grants and funding. So, you know, they may ask for $100,000 because they know that's, that's what they need, but there's, they're probably out there asking for money from other people. So, we can't assume that they expected all of us to get together to take care of them. I think that's gonna be a, this is gonna be very interesting.
Yeah.
This is gonna be fun.
Sure, okay.
So, another example of what you all are talking about might occur, and I prefer this situation. Let's say, because the mayor and Commissioner Walker, as the at-large, and myself, the three of us have an interest in a project south of the river. And so, we buddy up on that, and it's a $100,000 project, and we each only contribute $10,000. I, and that would only get them to 30. I think the good thing about this is it forces these groups, whether they're little or they're large, to go out and leverage those dollars and bring additional dollars to the table from somewhere else. Now, separate from that, I also think that when, once it's out there and it's very public that each of us only have $45,000, what I anticipate is the people looking for bigger grants aren't gonna waste their time with us. I think what they're gonna, we're gonna get a lot of our smaller mini-grants. And I just wanna add something that Commissioner Barnes used to say a lot and bring up. And I never really understood it when I first became a commissioner, but I have a much better understanding now. He used to say that he always felt like the Northeast didn't get a lot of grant money because they didn't have a lot of capacity in the Northeast. There weren't a lot of 501(c)(3)'s or organizations that were sophisticated enough to seek out those larger grants, that they didn't necessarily have what it took. Well, this small pot of money, and yet, they have some great groups there doing some amazing things, and we all know that. So, with this pot of money, the only partnership that they would need to engage in is a partner with an established 501(c)(3), and there's plenty of them here in the city, which really does what Mike said, which is create a small financial opportunity for those smaller fledgling groups that are doing really great things.
So, does the bylaws, do the bylaws specify? Because it's, because the conversation has been that each commissioner can allocate $45,000. Is that specified in here?
It will be, I just haven't gotten to it yet.
We have a ledger.
Joe's only on the first page.
Joe, I wish you would hurry up.
No more discussion. So, I'll just run through the rest of them real quick. On the eligible organizations, again, if you follow your sheet down, only 501(c)(3)'s in good standing. And good standing will be checked by the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation through their Guide Star and their process they work with everyone on. What I did wanna mention is that what's being proposed is that previously ineligible organizations would now be considered. So, I listed last year, the three last bullets there. Those are, that's language from our last year's statement that they were excluded, purposefully excluded. They could be included now, according to the way this is, the way this is being proposed. The grant qualification and evaluation criteria, and we've talked about that a little bit, but each individual, each individual commissioner will be responsible to ensure that every grant received is reviewed, even if it's not one of the ones you were interested in personally. That's gonna be your task. And to your point, Commissioner Philbrook, about the recommendation form, we haven't just, we haven't gotten, we didn't get to that level of detail. I have the one from last year. We can use as a template. Those, that was criteria that you guys, you guys set for the past two years. We did the first year, we modified it the second year. I'd like to build off of that or reduce from that or whatever we wanna do, but that's something we can come up with. We've got time for that. So, that'll be, that'll be forthcoming as we do that. The other proposed recommendations, these are basically the same from last year. We were looking for people to leverage additional funding, demonstrate alignment with our strategic plan and healthy communities, which is still out on our website. You know, get collaboration going, minimize duplication, measurable outcomes, all the things that were included in the last two years' worth of applications. And, you know, requests for general operating support will be considered if funding is to be used to significantly expand the service of the organization. Those are kind of the, some other principles that we've got included from last year. The proposed timeline, we'd like to make the application available February 9. You can see the rest of the, the rest of the dates there. And we'd like to end this at the end of May by basically giving notifications to those who are gonna receive the award. There's not a meeting that, meeting date set on this particular proposal, because we don't have a calendar past April. But in one of the meetings in May, we'd like to come back for the full commission to approve the slate. As soon as that's approved, we'll go to the community foundation, and they'll take it from there like they've done the last two years. So, getting into the numbers part of it, so we've got a total of $494,900 to be available for grants this year. And again, the, I was basing the original on 10, but we're already talking about 11, so I just was wanting to point out that this money will be distributed in late May. We'll have the full, the 11, 11 elected officials by that time. So, if you can, if you wanna do the 11, that'd be $44,990. That's all, that's all I have.
What? I'm just thinking that 11 person is only gonna have, they're gonna be involved.
We'll help you, we'll help you do it. It's, it's north on our side.
Thank you. I just wanted to say this, that I'm glad that the commission, as well as staff, has decided to move in this direction. When it was first brought to us, when I first got in office three years ago, it was something that I really thought was important, because I often feel the same thing that Ann spoke about, that Nathan Barnes used to speak about, which is the Northeast sometimes get left out because of the smaller groups. And so, with this money, we're able to be able to pinpoint groups that we know need money in our districts. And Commissioner Kane spoke to that as well. So, I'm glad that we have made a move in this direction. I think we will see some things get done across our, our districts. And I think what we thought was, was that we couldn't do with the additional, with the $4,900, $904 initially, I think we will see that we are actually able to quantify that by helping various groups and people in our, in our district. So, I'm glad, I'm thankful for that, and thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. I just still wanna make sure I understand that even if it's not option number one or number two, and listening to the earlier discussions about us maybe partnering with other commissioners because they like something coming from that district, and there may be no applications that quote, "Come from my district," let's say, wouldn't that require every commissioner to look at every application to really know and appreciate what's out there?
Well, I think that's certainly your, your option to do so. But again, I think that the, the thought of the committee was is that if you, if you, we received probably around the last couple of years, between the high 30s to low 40s in applications total that were reviewed. So, if you're looking at 11 or 10 people to review those, you know, you're kinda, you're kinda spreading the workload a little bit. I don't think it would preclude any individual commissioner from looking at all of them at any point in time. I mean, that can certainly be.
I would think the entire group would need to be submitted in a folder to the commissioners for all of us to review. And then, you can choose to read whichever ones you want. You would be encouraged to read all of them, is that right?
Yes.
But you all would be available to everyone.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, Joe, I think there's a little disconnect. Each commissioner originally was scheduled to get a list of all of the names of all of the grants that were gonna be submitted. But Mayor, your suggestion is fine, too. You might as well just give all the commissioners every grant, let them breeze through them. I think that's fine. But you are gonna have access to that anyway, you get to see them, so.
Well, yeah, and the reason I brought that up was because in my earlier question, it does not appear that option one or option two make allowance for that. But listening to the discussion about, you know, maybe partnering with someone, how would I know what they have, or how would they know what I have if everyone doesn't have access to everything submitted? The second thing was, I, I prefer the process last year that precluded the larger 501(c)(3)'s, like the school districts, the hospitals, from having access to this money for the very reason that Commissioner Murgia made reference to. This money should be available for those people who may not be as large and may not be as sophisticated as those entities are. And I think it just depletes the opportunities for some of these smaller 501(c)(3)'s to benefit. So, I really don't like that particular change, but I appreciate the work that the committee has done. And I understand from what I'm hearing here that each of us could award, depending on those figures, anywhere between $44,000 and $49,000 to one, five, whatever we wanted to do. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would just wanna point out, I guess, the pushback I had with the committee was that the number of grants that are gonna be issued. The first year, there was about 13. The second year, there's 17. Under this scenario, there could be dozens. And from a, you know, from a staff perspective, keeping track of all those, reading all the annual reports and reporting back to you timely could be, you know, a nightmare for us. So, I guess I just would ask that, you know, if you're gonna parcel out 2,000 at a time, that's gonna be tough, you know, for us to handle.
So, Gail, I hear your concern in the latter comment that you made about the bigger organizations. We talked about that, and let me tell you why we left them in. Because one of the things, back to Commissioner Barnes, it's like in memory of him today. But one of the concerns I had is you have some good organizations that don't have a 501(c)(3) in the Northeast. And so, we were concerned, I'm gonna make up an example for you. So, let's say, a good group of people that are doing amazing things in the Northeast come forward, and they wanna buy, I'm gonna make this up, a used truck for $5,000, because it's gonna help them carry, you know, or food from their community garden. I'm just gonna make that up. One of the concerns was is when small fledgling groups like that do things like this, when they fall apart, who is responsible for the truck? Where does it go? And we were worried about that. So, by, by forcing these smaller groups to partner with larger organizations like KUM.
So, by forcing these smaller groups to partner with larger organizations like KUMC, their family medicine does a lot of grassroots research stuff with local organizations, you can run it through their foundation, and that way, in the end, they'll be responsible for the accounting of that. Two things happened here. KUMC then works as a capacity builder with that neighborhood organization, it helps that group build capacity, and it's a safety net for public tax dollars, that we know that that truck is not going to end up in the hands of Joe Smith, who lives at 7th and Barnett. You know, we don't want to see that happen. So, that was the logic. It wasn't by any means, I think all of us agree, we would probably not be interested in some major research grant from the medical center. That's my district, and I would tell you, I would not be interested in that. It's more for them to work with the community to build capacity.
I can appreciate that. The other thought I have, though, is that would, as the requirement to become a 501(c)(3) may motivate these smaller groups, though, to attain that status, and they learn how to do this on their own without having to partner with that, because under the scenario that you just gave, I don't know if that would make those individuals, say, in my district, let's say, subject to the Board of, Board of Commissioners, the boards of those various other organizations. If we want to build self-help for the smaller ones, I think that might work against them in that regard, though. But that is certainly an option, too.
Commissioner Walker, and then Mr. Bach.
When we first talked about this, I voiced a concern, and actually, I didn't come around to the way we're going to do this easily. You know, when we had an outside independent review committee, you know, those were quality people. Now, maybe they did not live up to everyone's expectations about how they graded or evaluated. I'm certain they had more of a process than in the end we're going to have. Because if we get 50 applications, I'm not grading 50 applications, and I'm going to tell you that right now. I don't know how to grade them. I mean, I can look at them, I can read them, I'm sure they're all going to put forward a great purpose. And, you know, it's subjective whether I'm going to be able to determine whether they can accomplish it. What I like is making sure that what we get for our money is some value. I don't want to give $5,000 to a group and find out that 4,000 of it was spent on administrative cost. And what this report here does not identify is the back end of the deal. Now, we know what, or we have some idea of what our money went for and what purposes it was spent for, what percentages, I guess, might be administrative, at least in the larger groups. We don't, we don't have this on the calendar, that there's going to be an evaluation before this comes around again next year for distribution. And we should have some, you know, if I give $5,000 to a group, and I find out that 4,500 of it was spent to pay an executive director's salary, or supplies, and so forth, I don't, I personally do not want that. I want there to be some discernible benefit to the purpose or the people served, other than to pay. And I realize administration is part of it, but the idea is to not have 90 cents on the dollar going to administration. So, we need to be able to evaluate it at the end. And I realize that, you know, some things are, some people, people have to get paid, but this should not be a funding mechanism for somebody to make a salary. And that's what concerns me about the way we do it. But I also see the benefit of reaching a smaller needy group, needy clientele, that we're not reaching when we have the larger grants by the independent bodies. So, willing to go along with this for a year, see how it works out. It may work out fine, we may take another look at it next year.
Well, I believe Mr., Commissioner Walker really addressed the issue that I was just wanting to make clear, and make sure that's how I understood it was going to operate as well, that it, these are front-end loaded grants, correct?
Correct.
So, we would, the commissioners would go through and say, fund these 30 grants, and we issue out checks of 5,000, or...
10.
Yeah, hopefully. But if you issue them out, we're going to write a check, and if I put in for, I'm going to run a youth track program for $15,000, and someone elects to give me the money to go do that program, if I don't do anything with it, that's where that ends. And it's really, there's no evaluation on the backside. Now, we didn't really have that this year, but that's really been a theme of this governing body, I would say, of all the money we expend, of getting on to staff to say, we need to be more accountable in the way we track and administer those programs, and that's what Commissioner Walker's alluding to. So, there's, that's not really established with this program. We're going to write the check, and it's going to be more of a, probably a monitoring by the commissioner that awarded it, unless we develop something else, but I don't know how you would...
We do have a six-month kind of check-in with the Community Foundation, and they kind of let me know over the years, like, who's doing, if somebody's out of compliance, or not spending their money, or making a request. But that's just a, that doesn't monitor everything at the level of detail that we're talking about.
Well, before we award, I don't mean to interrupt, Doug, but before we, before we send out these notifications, we need to, we need to have a decision made on what we're going to require in reporting and how we're going to evaluate it, you know? In terms of results achieved, I don't want to give money year after year to some group just because they've got a good purpose and it sounds good, and nobody's really getting any services out of it.
I want to say, I expressed concern when this first came up, and I expressed my preference. I think what the committee's come up with, if we're going to do it this way, this is as good a model as we've had. My preference, if I were making the decision, is I would prefer to leave it with a third-party evaluation committee. For this reason, I think people will be surprised by the amount of political pressure that will be ramped up when it looks like we have $45,000 each to dole out to individual groups, that there will be a lot of pressure given to us. And I think the neutrality of the committee, the, yeah, I think it's less political, I think it's cleaner when you have a third party, that we appointed, frankly, we appoint the committee, and we appoint competent, capable people that did a great job, I think the committee did a great job. It was a hard job, but I thought they did a great job. I think it removes and insulates the elected body in a way that's valuable. I think the, my biggest concern about this is the potential for accusations about patronage, that we're funding groups of friends or people that we like who are getting money. That's a risk we take in doing it this way. I've heard, I've raised the concern before, I've heard that folks want to continue in this path. I'm, I guess I'm willing to try it for a year to see how it works out. But I want to put those concerns on the record, because I think they're real, and I think it would be, I think we need to go in with our eyes wide open of what kind of impact this is going to have moving forward. So, I'm not, I would prefer to continue the way we've been doing it. I think the grants have been solid, the organizations that have been funded have been good, the work that's been done has been good. I'm proud of the way we've spent the money in the past, and I would like to continue to do that. But if we're going to try this, I do agree, we need an evaluative process at the end, and if we can include that in this, I think that strengthens this argument. But I just want to offer caution that there are risks involved in moving in this direction.
Mayor, I think we're all going to, I agree with you, that's what I said the last time. I think we're all going to discover, we got friends we didn't know we had.
Commissioner Townsend, we have about five minutes to wrap up. Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. The last time this was discussed, I too favored the system that we were under. As I look at the dates where a lot of this activity will take place, I'm realizing that this will be the start of, in earnest, our budget season, and to do a good and diligent job on us reviewing these, that's going to take a lot of time away from that process to or add to it. I think I still would be more comfortable with a third-party person, but if the majority goes, you know, votes to go for another way this time, I'm looking forward to reviewing that, that we have a threshold of success or evaluation for where the money went, and certainly review the process next year.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Walters, and then Murgia.
So, we did not talk about changing the review and monitoring process that we currently have in place, or at least, the committee did not. So, are you thinking that there might be a way to strengthen that, or has that caused a problem so far in being able to track whether these entities actually followed through with what they proposed and what they were funded for?
No, I think it's just done retroactively. I mean, the grant year will end, we'll get the final report after the year's over, and then we go back and review. So, and year one, by the way, is on our website, all the, all the final reports from the, from year one of the grants are on our website.
So, they know they will have to document...
They do. And there's been a handful that have checked in and said, listen, I need to change my line item, or I need to do this or that, and we've just handled that through the Community Foundation. But all in all, it's not been an issue with the grantees coming back to us and saying, I'm not spending my money, or I need to change my total focus, or anything like that. We would bring that back to you.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Walker. I, once I distribute the money, if I can use that term, I really don't want to have any further involvement at that point. I would like the process to play out, that the organization receives the money, they do their tasks, and they document back to us that they've performed. And I don't particularly want to go check up on them monthly.
I mean, we've had a six-month report and then a final report for a year's grant. You can add to that, or you can take away from that, but that's been our process and the path.
So, I hear tonight consensus from the commission to move down this path. And I've heard a couple reservations, but by and large, I've heard consensus to move down this path. I would ask the, Joe, for you to draft up a request for action, a voting item, a formal policy that would be voted on by the commission at a future commission meeting in time for us to meet this timeline. So, if you would put together that, then we will have an opportunity for formal motion and action, any final debate that we want to do at that time, and we can put this in place at the, in a near-future commission meeting. Yes?
I just have one comment I want to address. What I keep hearing over and over again is that people are concerned about how the money's spent and accountability, and I appreciate that. I just want to let you know, as someone that deals with this every day, a good grant, a well-written grant will lay out very clearly what they intend to do with the money and how they intend to measure their success. And it will be their job to report that success or lack of success back to you. So, I don't want those people, I think Commissioner Philbrook talked about a grading system, and I know people were concerned, Commissioner Walker mentioned, you know, who's going to check on them? No. In the grant process, it doesn't work like that. In the grant, those people applying should be able to communicate all of that. If they can't communicate that, they should not be getting a grant. So, hopefully, that will make those people feel better that made those comments.
Okay. We are, this meeting is adjourned, we are going downstairs, and we will start our 7:00 meeting at 7:15. We need to give the crew time to turn the cameras, so we will begin our meeting at 7:15.